It ruins my life twice a year.
All right, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. We have a pretty light agenda this evening, but don't get used to it because the next few evenings after this are going to be
Giddy o'uns.
Very busy with budget and all sorts of things. But the first item tonight, Jen is out of town for work in Willamette this evening. And next week, we have one proclamation to honor Women's History Month, and I believe that Sigourney is reading that.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions about the proclamation?
I know the two women's clubs are coming to accept it.
I think we invited the Fort Knightley and the Carter Women's Club, so I'm not sure who has.
They both said they'll be there.
They both have said that they're coming.
Fort Knightley Club is very excited.
Good.
I was there at their last meeting and they were like, who's going to be there?
Awesome.
But we're tiny, so.
Tiny but mighty.
Yes.
All right, so that's our only presentation of next week. And then we have one public hearing, which is an ordinance to grant a third franchise amendment to Zayo Group LLC for a group expansion. Fids are not required for amended franchises, but we will have to do April call vote next week. And Tammy Chassane is here for what I'm sure is a lengthy staff report.
Very long. So this is the third amendment for Zayo. This is on the exhibit, it's essentially a short route from around 12-9, 75 rural drive to 12-9 rural drive. It will provide fiber to that facility. This will provide access lines to them, which could, which would mean that they would incur right-of-way use fees to be paid to the town. But it's essentially three conduit to supply that facility.
Questions for Tammy?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
This seems familiar. And then we do not have any general items. We have one consent item, which is an awarded contract for the Brady Park tennis court resurfacing and repair. The staff is available if anybody has questions on that. Oh, I do have one question.
Oh, okay.
Good, because I'm like, wow, it's seven of three, we're almost done.
So I notice at the bottom, and I think this is very proper, but I have a question about. Our staff recommends a $14,000 contingency, which is approximately 10% of the contract amount be authorized. I know we do that a lot on, you know, we set aside a contingency. Is there, this isn't, I don't know if this is a question for you, but does it make it more likely that someone will feel comfortable charging us more?
No.
It's just a.
The reason being is they have a lump sum contract. Anything that would require use of that contingency would have to be approved by us. And if it's not valid, then it would be.
All right. And us is the staff?
Right, the staff.
Okay, so I thought, yeah. Thank you. Good question. Any other questions or comments on the contract? All right. We do have a one discussion item, which is a pretty big deal. It's the financial review for fiscal year 2019, the first half of 2020 and revenue projections for 2021. So this will help us fall right in line, get ready for budget season. And Jenny Tripoli, our Director of Finance, is here for the staff presentation. And I think I see other people who are here to help you along with that. And Karen Gagliano is our Budget Manager, and she's going to walk us through, and I'm going to be the backup singer.
Glad to sign the papers.
Okay. Okay, does everyone have a copy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just a general overview as we start for FR 21. Our real estate tax projection, we feel is relatively strong. And we will be able to provide more details after February 25th on that figure. Meal taxes, the increase that was, that happened in FR 20 is, you'll see that in what we actually collected. And we're projecting it to remain flat as we go forward. And then all other revenues in general are relatively flat. So that's kind of the big picture overview. And we'll dive into a little bit more detail. Here's a graph that shows the general fund revenues from 2017 to what we're projecting or estimating for 2021. The major categories are general property tax, other local taxes, charges for services, intergovernmental, and other. Of course, general property taxes are pretty self-explanatory. You can see the changes over the years there. The other local taxes are things like meals tax, B-Pole, sales tax, and transient occupancy. Charges for services are mostly parts of RAP and other services to enterprise funds. And the intergovernmental are grants, state and federal. And then other is pretty much permits and fees and fines.
So I'll jump in on this one. You can see kind of the gentle trending upwards of the general property taxes. Other local taxes bounce a little bit, so 17 and 18, that's, B-Pole is really accounting for that bounce. Then we had that decrease that we had all talked about and know about in 19. The estimate for '20 and the projection for '21 for B-Pole, we left those at the budgeted amount of the 4.2. We're not going to know the actual B-Pole number until all the returns are in, and they're due March 1st. And it usually takes through about mid-April to get all of that sorted out and booked. So that's still a very conservative number in there.
Jenny, is that March, is that March date, like a state mandated date?
It's March or May, March 1st or May 1st.
But it's not our choice to have it some other time?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And here's a pie chart showing the major pieces of revenue with other local taxes at 38.5% and general property at 34.6. So two main parts of the pie there. And here's a chart that shows what makes up the total general fund revenues, what the actual collections were in 2019, through the adopted, through the estimated for FY '20, and then the projected for '21. And we're going to dive into those a little bit more as we move forward. That's kind of the overview. So for general property taxes, we're looking at a projected annual increase of 518K or 4.23% over last year. And again, we'll provide more details after February 25th.
The reason for that is the county embargoes the details of those numbers until they do their presentation to their board. So we'll break it out, you know, residential, commercial, once they finalize and give us that final.
Okay.
So are these the taxes with nothing changing? This is just.
That's just assessments.
Okay.
Under other local taxes, in general, that category is increasing slightly by 144,000, based on comparing FY '20 estimated and FY '21 projected. Under that category, we have the transient occupancy tax that's remaining relatively flat. The B-Pole, again, Jenny addressed that, we're looking at an increase of 100K for FY '21. Local sales tax, a slight increase of 25,000 between estimated for '20 and projected for '21. And the meals tax is showing that one-time bump in '20 and then relatively flat after that. Charges for services, overall, a decrease of about 61,000 in the category. Pretty much the bulk of that is the recreation programs decreasing about 65,000. And other fees in that category are pretty much flat. The intergovernmental revenues, overall, a projected decrease from '20 to '21 due to the one-time funding for the paving project of the 558,000. Karen?
Yeah.
Can we go back to the previous one? Why is our recreational program fee projected to decrease 65,000?
A lot of that, I'll jump in, is the Herndon Festival revenues came in a bit lower over the last couple of years. So we're being conservative with that. That's really the majority of that, the 65, because it's typically budgeted around 380, but it came in around 310, 315, or 18 or 19. So we're hoping, you know, of course, with lessons learned from the relocation last year, that it can go back up. But just really super conservative with the estimates.
Thank you. Back to the intergovernmental revenues. We're looking at a slight increase of about 18,000 in the police 599 funds for FY '21. The highway maintenance is looking flat, and the 5% communications, we're looking at that to continue to decrease based on what's been happening.
Kind of the starter. It is conservative, obviously. As we get better data throughout '20 and get more accurate, we'll update. The B-Pole number, you know, again, that we budget it very conservatively and then use anything above the 4.2 as one-time to fund capital purchases and fleet replacement. So in addition to the meals tax increase, because we did lose quite a bit of B-Pole with that exception back in '18, so.
And last year, we used 1% of the point of that against capital. We intend to do the same thing with this budget here as well. 1% of the meals tax increase from last year went for capital purchases that we otherwise would be using the excess B-Pole to cover. We had that downtick in B-Pole, which we tried to make up for.
And the police 599 is the return?
No, no, that's the state, that's the state's grant operator, which.
Mr. McGinn?
Just a couple of things. I think it'd be advantageous to put into a discussion. Like, for example, you look at when people talk about, like, they'll look at the rates being the same, but property value is going up. And there are certain people that talk about that, but they don't bring up the fact that there's inflation rate. Like, for example, let's say the real estate rate aggregate is 2% this year. Like, well, even though the rate's flat or whatever, you know, my overall assessment's gone up 2%. Well, inflation's 2.3%, CPI is 1.6%, and inflation, or the Social Security went up 1.6%. So I think showing that, you know, apples to apples, because it greets my teeth every time someone comes up and brings up one side of a coin where it has two sides of the coin as well. If you look at the overall net of it, you know, because things increased 2.1, and then your rate went up 2.1, it's actually flat. So I think that's important. And the other thing I think we can, I would love to, I mean, we probably can't because we're a Dillon Rule state. I would love to see us move our annual year from, like, say, from where it's at now to give you guys like a 90-day buffer. Because I think the way that the state has everything designed, it's impossible. I mean, I know how much time and effort you put. You know, I'll walk past the HMC and I see, you know, 12 o'clock at night, I see the financials. The right side of the building just lit up. I think if we're able to move out our fiscal year, so you guys have more room for projections, because like, things like B-Pole and all these other things that come in.
It's volatile.
It's volatile and it's ridiculous. And it's not fair, I forget about fair. It's not the way exactly right. You know, we can certainly plan on certain things. But I do think that, you know, if Richmond's going to be taking things into consideration, that's one thing they need to seriously review. Because it's a problem for small, I mean, I say we're small, we're not small. I mean, we, you know, had a 56, you know, 50-plus million dollar budget last year. That's a lot, that's a big number. I mean, you know, if you're Clifton or somebody else, no, again, you know, no deference to them, or even to Nellin, where you're $7 million, you can figure that out in a couple of days. But this is, you know, this is a mid-sized corporation.
It forces us to have a certain level of assumptions going into this that we have to, that we plan on.
Right.
The assumptions are based in some history and having some expert opinions wrapped around it. If I can just take a step back to the comment you made about the real estate tax. The devils of the numbers, the details of the numbers.
Absolutely.
Here's why. When you have 43, 42, 43% of your real estate tax base is commercial or residential, one movement on one side of the equation or the other can make that up, make that 4%. And I'm not, I'm not throwing anything out here that is, because it's a sequestered number, I don't even know. But I suspect we're going to see a disparate difference between those two increases. To the point of, I think residential may not move a whole, a lot of commercial might be moved a little bit more.
Sure.
That's just what I suspect is going on, but we'll know more after the 20th.
Right. So is our July 1 to June 30th fiscal year mandated by the state?
Yes, I'm pretty sure it is.
But I can double-check that. I mean, Fairfax water, for example, while a special purpose district has a calendar year. But again, they're not, you know, a political subdivision, so I can confirm that.
It would be a small feat to make a shift, I understand, but.
It's something that needs considering, because, I mean, that's, I mean, corporations, when they want to align better with, you know, you don't see them going calendar year sometimes. If you see a shift from a large corporation going from, you know, like, their government business goes from 25% to 60%, they align more with, you know, like, Microsoft's been creeping every quarter to, you know, they're doing May now. But I think it's because it just aligns better with the numbers and projections, just makes it that much easier.
I think it is mandated, though, because your audit's due by 12-31. Your budget has to be proposed by a certain date, and that all goes towards the July 1st to June 30th.
It's just not fair to you guys in regard to, you know, again, I just think it's the way that the state's designed with the Dillon Rule. It's kind of a, you know, Richmond is the all-powerful thing, and everyone else has to suffer for it, and I think it's stupid.
We're getting about that. What it's worth, sorry, as I keep hitting Lisa's finger, because.
As we get more data, you know, again, the past is not gospel, it's God, as we know. But that's why I wanted to show, or we wanted to show this pie chart in particular, and it's not 3D. Because other local taxes, a great portion of that is excise taxes, which are the pass-throughs, right, for those tax charges, and also sales tax, and those are very income-related.
You may want to change the pie chart for a mistake or.
It's not a 3D pie, it's not. I think it shows the right magnitude.
But that being said, I mean, things like meals tax has been a predictable, that is, has a very predictable number. And barring an economic downturn, that number has been almost dead-on year in, year out.
Okay. I'm just trying to make it easier for you guys, because it's, I know it's not easy, so. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments for the point of.
That makes sense, because we're mandated reporting.
Yes, ma'am.
In the list of general fund revenues by category, I know it's permit is, but what's a privilege fee? So that's like a right-of-way use fees, I believe. It's, I think those are kind of old terms in some regards, but it's letting you use something and it's going to be a fee for it. It's not the same as use of money in property, that's investments, that's rental income. So there aren't that many fees, you know, within that category. Like, the lane inspection fees, it's the right-of-way permit fees, it's, I think they're like four.
Oh, wow, okay. And have we had any takers on the Airbnb licensing?
We had one person inquiring that I know of, but.
Well, I think Vicki Barreson did, but maybe that's. She inquired. I didn't know if they're one you wanted. Okay, so we don't really know what impact that's going to have.
Put that in the 500 dollar increase to the budget, please include that.
We're going to have to increase that.
Any other questions or comments on this discussion item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm here. Thank you for some of this. I think what would help me digest this a little bit is like a comparison on where we actually pended up on the estimates of the prior years.
Absolutely, how books. Funny you should mention that. So in October, we came to you with a projection.
Yeah.
And had not as much data, and so we were a little more optimistic when we came to you with our projection in October and projected FY '21 at around 37.4 million. And we're sitting here at about 36.6, or 9 million with rounding. So some of that was just getting a little more conservative, again, with transient occupancy and meals taxes, where we had built in a 1% to 2% buffer in those projections. But now that we have more information and as we're trying to formulate a budget around this, we tend to bring it in a little, a little more. I think, to your point, it would be helpful for us to give you a little chart of our assumptions.
Just deltas. It's deltas, doesn't have to be numbers.
No, but you're right, because as we, as we do this year after year, we should go back and see how close we were. And that's partially what the, why we show the 2020 adopted budget numbers here, too. Because that's really the official estimate for the year, so, you know, not too bad. But again, '20 is far from over, and there are, there are lags. Meals tax has lagged a month, sales tax has lagged two months. Some revenues are quarterly, although most of those are, it's the same dollar amount every quarter.
And that's something like B-Pole, where we make assumptions in here and, like, so you see the adopted budget. We have the estimates based on six months in, okay? So it gives us a pretty good sense. Well, B-Pole, we have no receipts in yet. We're waiting for that magic date to appear, so we're still holding on to our estimates, so we can't inform it any better than where we are today.
They're coming in, so we have about 800,000 books so far, but.
It's like the Iowa caucus. Still way still.
Right.
Still.
No, no.
I think we're a little more.
We account better than that. They're still projecting.
This is the caucus, for one thing.
So thank you. So is anyone else concerned? Maybe it's just my view on this, that the revenues are appearing to remain flat for the foreseeable.
Kind of the story.
It's like you have an office budget.
Okay, well, I just, I would have thought or hoped that we saw some uptick ever so slightly.
We did in property taxes a little bit. Like, it's like I said, meals tax is always, I mean, that's steady Eddie, that's been the same. Transient lodging doesn't fluctuate that much. Real estate, I was hoping, it's a lagging indicator, so it is, as the economy improves, those assessments kind of slowly follow them. Similarly, when the economy dies, they slowly fall back down.
And let me just put my concern to the context, because obviously, if your revenues remain flat, your services delivery as we expand increase. So now we have another shortfall potentially.
Case in point, I'll tell you right now. So right now, between healthcare and retirement, we're talking, they're in, it's about happening. Right there, just in those two categories that are up over previous years. So to your point, yes. So what we're seeing is, and it's something we've been warning for a couple of years, where we were watching those two curves get closer and closer together, and it's just more of the same. The revenues were remaining flat, but, you know, cost of living is cost of living, labor costs are through the roof across the board. The BLGM made a conference back last week, sat there with the Vice President of Richmond Fed, Chief Economist, talking about what's going on in the economy, what the indicators are, where we can see the economy moving the next year in Virginia and nationally. And she was sitting there just drilling, labor costs are just killing everybody, because the unemployment rate being where it is, it's just driving costs through the roof in labor. And we're seeing that for us as well. I mean, we can't, we couldn't hire, we had to readjust labor rates at some of our lowest level, unskilled and skilled laborers to get people in here to fill out the workforce. It's across the board. So to your point, yes, costs are going to help. And it's an economic-based question, although we have some very flat, very flat revenues. Now, real estate, I do want to get inside the numbers on 25th.
My last question is.
Sure, go ahead.
Not a lot of effort, I'm not asking to research, but is there an easy way to chart the delta in terms of our revenues and costs over the past, like, 10 years? Like, where do we think we need to be, where we actually were, what was that delta? And I'm thinking it's probably increasing year over year.
You're right.
So that.
Yeah, we have a good, we have probably a good four or five years, because John Cazzella started doing this from five to go with three years ago. And we started doing that then, so we looked two years prior, and we started building, so we should have that laying. We should, we should have the last five-year plan.
Yeah, just my view. I think at some point, we have to decide how quickly we want to catch up and what the solutions are, revenues are.
When we did the, the projection back in October, we had something similar to that, where you can start to see that.
It's starting to.
Yeah, really grow. But, yeah, we have the data, so I can certainly.
So one of those, and I want to project those based upon what you have estimated in terms of.
And some of the interesting things inside the budget, you'll see, is over the past, and I would say goes back by 10 years, we're relatively revenue flat. Our population's been stable over 10 years. Our workforce has been the same size over the last 10 years. We haven't grown the workforce at all. So I would argue that we're probably about right size. It's just the cost of employment is just, is off through the roof. Cost of materials for the O and M side of the budget, which is about 20%, the budget's gone up considerably as well. But you're not seeing growth in that revenue stream as well. What we try to do is, we've tried to get efficient in our service delivery, and we look for efficiencies there. For a couple of years, that helped us. We were able to get a little more efficient for a couple of years, but we're running out of those efficiencies. And then ultimately, things like new, new demands are coming up, we might have to add personnel. We are looking at positions that are vacated, that may not be as applicable as they once were. Can we do them a different way? We're converting those into the new positions, not creating new positions, just to create new positions. We've had new positions a couple more, but they were replacing old positions that we got rid of.
Yes, are you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Something that Jenny said just caught my ear, and I wanted to follow up on it. You said something about the delta between, between what we think B-Pole is bringing in and what we, which is higher than what we budget for, that you use that for fleet augmentation, is that right?
So the, we, I'll back up a few, was it last year or the year before? We brought lifecycle replacement into the general fund.
Right.
And it was for that, and also to fund the general fund portion of the CIP, where the big delta that we used to get in B-Pole, I mean, it was very large, was going to go towards both of those. When that's, when that shut off, that was the 1% in meals tax. So 900,000 every year, give or take, is transferred out to the CIP fund and the downtown parking fund. And, but the lifecycle maintenance for the fleet is, we're still, you know, kind of truing that up, but that's, that can run anywhere from a couple hundred thousand to a million, so we're trying to smooth that. And it's those two items, and those are the real, if you will, capital. Like, we use capital, we really mean a couple of things when we say it, but it's the big, the big stuff. But the one-time costs that go into the CIP is, you know, what we're trying to capture with that 1% of the meals tax.
So as we've talked before, B-Pole tax is intangible, and it's a complicated tax. So business comes into town, they have to estimate the first two years, they pay us an upfront for the first two years. They come at the end of the second year, they do an audit, we might owe them money. They might owe us money. A company could be doing services in one particular category, gets taxed at this rate, can decide, no, actually, what we're doing is providing this level of service, a different industry-level service at a different rate. So they can apply to change their category, categorization of their business, and we may owe them money. Or they might end up paying more. So it is a really convoluted tax to understand and use. And what we've seen over the years is volatility in this, in what we're getting in based on the grocery receipts of the business. Or they can claim that their grocery receipts aren't being produced here in Herndon, they're actually being produced across the street in Fairfax, so they're paying Fairfax. And then there's an auditing function that happens, and it's like I said, convoluted. So what we do is we budget low. So first, let's say we're historically at 5.1 million, we'll budget like 4.2, 4.3, because the 5.1 is actually, it'll fluctuate around 5.1. We'll take the rest and apply it as a one-time revenue to a one-time expenditure like capital. So that's historically how we've thought about that.
So why are we doing it two years? Why aren't we?
Thank you, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, it seems really. That is.
It is, like I said, this is a draconian state code-written taxing mechanism that is one of the most convoluted things I've ever had.
That's one of the things in New Jersey.
V and L, you've got to fix that, that's just.
There are a lot of exceptions to it, too.
Please correct my math, she does it all the time. Please correct my math, she does it all the time.
No, it's, it's.
There's so many handcuffs.
And, um, the reality is, we could have businesses here who, that are only back office businesses and generate no revenue.
That's a huge exposure for us.
It is, and redevelopment is a huge exposure.
Well, that, that's one of the reasons why we created a specific reserve fund.
Yeah, right.
Just to cover if we have to refund money.
This is the scariest part of the budget every time.
Uh-huh, so we actually have a fully funded reserve category that is set aside specifically for this.
I love watching these guys.
I really feel like we have to comment. I really feel like we need to, to address this, because this is, this is not a, a good way to do business.
They also try to take it away from us, every, every journal somebody.
Yes, every journal somebody talks about taking it away from.
So that revenue is just no longer important.
And now we have a four million dollar hole in our budget, like five, if you look at cable contracts right away, it's everything to be funneled through Richmond, all it is is taken power away and just.
Yes, if you look at our legislative agendas, that almost every year we have the language in there, like that we oppose anything that takes away B-Pole without a, a, a substitute revenue.
So, so to that end, I mean, it's not correcting B-Pole, they get an easier tax to deal with in terms of administration or in payment, it's actually, we're fighting it just to keep it, because we need that money.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's really no way to predict that, and that's unfortunate, so.
That's why we leave it alone, yeah.
And even the way we, you know, like last week, we brought the point about, you know, why can't we put it in funds, well, again, the state handcuffs get to the point where it's like you can take this gold under this dollar fund and, you know, it may, it doesn't even keep up with inflation at times, and you can find something that's better, and as, as secure and safe.
Signee, you got everybody all riled up.
It's my way.
I was a little concerned. Thank you.
Business is so predictable, on top of that, you're projecting not based on the actual, and the projection is two years.
That's right.
I think it's just some of that stuff that was.
I need to get that crystal ball back from Charlie.
Yeah.
Now, once you're through those two years, you go on an annual cycle of grocery receipts and your taxes are.
Then you still have another business coming in doing that, screwing up your, but that, that seems like there was some lobby back, you know, twenty years ago that got that done, and it's been twenty years ago.
Today is one of the most confusing things we've done.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to be, because why wouldn't we change something that's twenty years old that doesn't work for us?
And because of the volatility, what we've just started doing is treating a, a certain portion of it as a one-time revenue source and, you know, it's.
But businesses are so much less predictable now, I would say, I mean.
And that helps us too, it insulates us from that downturn, if we lose that, then I can cancel a capital project this year. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm doing seventy percent of my person, seventy percent of my operating budgets, personnel, we're applying against the general fund, then I lose that, I have a big problem. I mean, capital project, I can defer a year, deferring people, not the story.
That's another reason why I'm glad we don't have it due in May, May's just too close to the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, yeah.
At least, but it's due in May, at least in March, we have a, another quarter to.
It's the worst episode of twenty-four ever.
Was that their choice, or was that?
You can choose, you can choose.
May, March first or May first, but the, the, the license cycle is calendar year, that is also set, and the renewal dates are either March first or May first. And the reason for the May first is your people's taxes are done by then, so, um, there's a little less auditing work to do on the back end, but, you know.
Exactly, there's pros and cons to both, but.
Three or four minutes, this table had hair when we first started looking at B-Pole, so look out for me.
Wow.
So, uh, back to the, back to the, um, the fleet, so we will eventually get to the point, we hope that we will not have to use some unexpected amounts of money.
Right.
Well, it, it, yeah, it's matching, it's trying to make things predictable and smooth as possible with that.
I think what we did is, I was talking, talking to Jenny and the team about this earlier today, is I think I got a little aggressive last year, trying to get it all into the general fund as quickly, I should have done more of an immersion, a slow immersion, would be a percentage, fifty percent this year, maybe eighty percent the next year. And slowly build the capacity over time, as in trying to ram it in at once, that way we'll save ourselves from throwing in any maintenance as well. So, like, we, we kind of ease into the pool as opposed to jumping into the pool. So, we're trying to give, uh, the, like the vehicle replacement Tammies, uh, replacement program, or twelve-year life cycle replacement plan, I want to keep that solid, but it's going to be funded partially out of recurring revenues, partially out of, out of one-time revenues initially.
Totally, I'm sorry, totally different, like, thoughts of that, um, any reason why we do sort of the capital on that and not like an OpEx?
Well, if we, you want to generally have one-time revenues or one-time windfalls be used for one-time expenses, um, so. You could make the argument that B-Pole's recurring, and, and it recurs, that's true, um, and therefore could be used against OpEx, but because it is so volatile, that's why we leave that low level of the four, four point two, bumping it to four point three in twenty-one. For, you know, O and M and personnel and the rest for more of the one-time, because fleet replacement, um, the, if you're replacing, that's recurring, but if you're adding something new, let's say we need a new backer truck, then, and they're, they're not cheap, right? So that's generally that be watered and served, but the point is, instead of you seeing this happening in your general fund every year, it's kind of factored in and smoothed. So, that's really where you want to, you want to be sure that you're using one-time with one-time, because if you're balancing your recurring with these one-time windfalls, then you're going to get into trouble.
But ultimately, we want it all recurring.
No, I get that, you can OpEx and ramp that over ten years.
Which OpEx?
Operating expenses.
I'm sorry, operating expense as opposed to the capital.
Anybody else have a question or comment? Sheila, did we ask all your questions?
Sorry, I don't see that.
No, no, I, I think so, but you don't see any glaring like last year, we were looking at a huge.
We won't know until later, will we?
You're on the record.
Okay, maybe not, okay.
I'm starting to blank it, uh, right now, it's still to really tell, there are some very disconcerting numbers in, that are being discussed around the table. And we spent a couple hours today working on them, uh, sent everybody away with homework, we're coming back on Thursday, go at it again, we're trying to get ready for your two-on-two budget meetings.
Cause those start next week, right?
Start next week, um, and we'll be talking to you about it at that point, but there, there are some things where, it's still a waste of, but we'll get there.
And one of the things that you've been working on, um, taking all the cost of, like, parks and res, putting everything, maintenance and everything right there, and all the other departments the same way, how is that going?
We are in the middle of the study, we're just, actually, the early part of the middle of the study right now, um, we had some delays in getting the R and P out the door, and then the responses, we had some issues with responses, and then we finally awarded the contract, and they're underway now. It's not going to be necessarily reflected in this one, but it'll be reflected, we'll know more by spring.
Because at one point, everything just kind of went deep into Ducky's budget, and now you're.
No, we're, we're.
Spreading it around to be appropriate, which I think is the best way.
We're changing some other methodology of odd-kind services for events and things like that, to create more transparency in the cost of these things, is another thing we're doing, but, I mean, that's a net zero increase to the budget, it's just how we're advertising it in the budget, so we're transparent. It's not like they're increasing, they've always been there, it's just getting them in the right spot.
And then, I suppose we'll be talking about what we're doing about the in-kind, like Friday Night Live?
Yes.
And where all of that?
And that's what I'm talking about here, so we're, what we're doing, just to let you know, is we have created, we, we, we are, pardon, we're moving donations out of Clark's budget, which is non-departmental, because it didn't belong to Clark's budget. We're putting a second line underneath that for in-kind services, which will be a repository for all the labor costs for, for the events that you all have sanctioned, uh, we'll put them in there. And then that will be the repository for labor costs for the police or public works, and we'll do their fund transfer, which fund transfer is not going to make those departments whole as these things occur. But it'll all be very glaring as to how much those things cost.
And that was originally going to be on the budget, or on the agenda tonight, and it just didn't come together.
We had, we, at the, at the eleventh hour, we had some questions about compliance with state code, and we sort of pulled back, and so we were looking at that question before we could break it.
And then one of the really successful events we have in town, and I think they should really good for our youth and all the adults, is the National Night Out. And just making sure that, that's not a huge hit for the HPD, but, okay.
I think we're, we're good on that front.
Yeah, it's not really a cost issue.
From the authority?
It's a staffing issue, that's the biggest issue. It's a huge staffing issue, and I just want to make sure you guys don't get, you know, behind eight balls because you're doing that.
Um, we could get behind eight balls despite all the efforts, I mean, it's just, we're already way behind now, but that's not because of anything the town's doing, it's just because of lobby separations and things, so we just don't know, but that's a priority for us, that event is a priority for us every year.
I know, and it's great, and, uh, the public loves it, and I, I think it helps your job, you can see your, because of the contacts that you make, thank you.
Any other questions for, for discussion? All right, thank you very much, um, thank you, Jenny. Uh, that brings us to roundtable, who would like to start off, Mr. McCann?
I got nothing.
All right, who's next?
Signee, um, I have a couple things, um, first of all, uh, I'm going to my first planning coordination advisory committee from Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, so, that is next Wednesday. Um, if anyone has anything, any advice or con, uh, information they'd like me to bring with me, I'm going to be meeting with staff, and I'll be asking you all, um, uh, for your input, um, so there's that. I wanted to check with the town manager about the HPRB guidelines, have you, uh, got anything to report about that?
Mine, this English colleague.
I assume you mean the timing of. Yes, yes. Couple things are going on, we got a bit of a setback due to, I'll be honest, we had several illnesses in the department. Nothing major, but people being out for a week and all with, with what was going on. The other thing that is slowing the project down is the fact that the staff is working with the consultants to try to frame this, to capture what we've heard so far. And what that means is, the consultants and staff, and right now it's primarily the staff, we've sent some things back to the consultants, are trying to design this in a way that we think it will work for both being clear, what's the guidelines for the HPRB? And what's the helpful information for the general public. This is a different format than the consultants have ever used, it's not something you see in other guidelines, it's not something that you see in other pattern books. So we are actually reinventing the wheel, and the consultants are trying to work with us on this, um, and the consultants also are. Being very careful, and reasonably so, because they know where the town is trying to get, where we're trying to make it, um, easier for the applicants, but at the same time, as professionals. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, they know what the standards and the state rules, as well as the planning rules found in zoning ordinances, what constitutes heritage or historic preservation. And they, they're trying to make certain that, um, as we try to loosen some things, that we're not going to the point where that we could be jeopardizing the district. And that's, that's a very serious balance. And so, um, I think, and I haven't even spoken to, uh, to Bill about this, but I think we're probably going to have to in the next few weeks or so, send rights down to North, to, you know, spend some quality time with the consultants. Because of the fact that as this has stretched out, uh, they of course have other projects that we're looking on too, so we're trying to find a way to make certain that both our staff time as well as their time is used to the greatest benefit possible in the time of them. So, um, we're still trying to find out and work with them to find out what is a reasonable projection date, and we're pushing them, and they know it, and they're on board to be pushed.
Because we had originally, we're aiming for late March, correct?
Right, right, and, and that slipped in, in part because of our staff with the illnesses and with, we've got some other big plans in right now, current, but, um, you know, now we've got to, now we've got to get them to kind of like. Meet us and, you know, keep that tight as possible, um, so I'm happy to answer any additional questions, but that's, that's what's going on behind the scenes.
So it's now looking like different?
I would think so, I would think so, but.
Are we communicating this, maybe we need to mention it in, um, maybe the town manager's comments at the public hearing, just to keep it out there, so people know that we haven't forgotten, but.
No, believe me, yeah.
Well, I, I know, we know we haven't forgotten, but when you're, when you're not in all those meetings, it can seem that way.
But there are people in the public who are coming.
They don't understand why it's, it's taking us long.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I'm not done yet, but wait, now how much would you pay? On the roundtable, is there some reason why, why, why we always have two council members at each table? Because I think it would be more efficient and a lot more fun for everybody if there was one council member at each table.
I think real estate, try to set up six or seven tables, I think that, logistics around that will become a look at it.
Depending on the number of people that you have.
She wants her own table.
I don't like that, you can't sit with us, Signee.
At the last roundtable, I had, there were three council members at the table.
There was hardly anywhere by myself, so.
I could have come and sat with me, because I was alone.
Okay, but there still would have been two people.
Well, last time everyone was.
See, this soup just started to trend.
I don't want to be a pirate.
I know, well, well, last, the reason there was an odd number like that last time is that there were seven of us, and everybody was able to attend, so it was going to be either one person alone or three people at a table.
Plus two, there's also the, a time, the timing issue, because that gives us four tables or three tables, it gives folks more time, so if, we have seven tables, we're going to rotate them like every ten minutes, that's for every fifteen minutes, and we're going to ram them in and out. Cliff notes.
Okay, then I'm not, okay.
Yeah, just try to.
I'll talk to you about my thoughts offline, because I don't think it's.
I like what you.
And, um, we did have a citizen ask if we could update them on a couple of things at the roundtable, is that going to work now? They would ask.
Did you get the mayor's, or did you get the term's email today?
I did get that.
Okay, I can read that.
Uh, okay.
Or you can, that's, whoever's there.
All right, okay, thank you. That's it. Uh, the difference is, all right, Angela?
No, just, oh, fun fact, I was traveling, this week, ran into former Governor Martin O'Malley from Maryland.
Oh, really?
I was racing them a couple hours at the airport, a lot of good advice, I'll share that over time, but, uh, he said, don't be afraid to do things you know need to be done, basically. I'd like to send it out a few drinks, so.
It's easy to say when you.
That's a good airport, fine.
When you're not in office, you have a couple pops in you.
He was ill.
He also was the one who heard the story about the soup when he became mayor, the old mayor in Baltimore.
That's right.
The pile of the soup that was actually, it's a great story.
That's cool.
Put that soup in front of you.
Do you have anything else for us?
No, I, 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 I have, I have nothing.
Did anybody meet anybody cooler than Mike, Mike O'Malley, Martin O'Malley, like, pretty, or Sheila?
My best airport friend, oh, there we go, was in Nevada, but not recently, George Burns, so I have a picture of my husband.
Gotta be from this millennium.
Yeah, I got a picture, okay, rumor, and then I got him to sign it.
I met all of them.
And that was when my late husband was still alive, so we got our pictures with George Burns and a signature on it, okay, um, we were down at B and L, and for those of you that didn't go, do you want a copy of all the bills going through?
Sure.
Yeah, I picked up a couple of excerpts for y'all, and, uh, so, so you can read about all these things.
all these things that we're trying to get our handcuffs on.
Bunch of them.
Who knows?
There's also hyperlinks in some dispatches, but they might be.
That, that would be got something in your hand if you want to kind of peruse it and see.
This is probably on VML's website. It possibly, um, hyperlinks there as well. I don't know.
But if you're stuck waiting on a meeting, if you're stuck at an airport without George Burns, you could. But they, they've got some really good bills in there talking about some of the things we were talking about tonight with.
It was posted today or last week?
Last week, yeah. So you can see those perused on after your leisure. And, let's see, there was one other day. Oh, at the roundtable, yes. I think I did talk to the town manager today and I think you said you would make some kind of announcement at the beginning on the downtown development and what's going on with Aslan, because people keep asking those at every roundtable. And that way they get one consistent, because sometimes when you're there, I notice that you get pinged around the tables. And then that way you can just kind of put that out there so that people have the answer. And they hear it from one place and they know it's of authority.
I'm glad we did that.
And that makes it really nice. And Saturday night, our own Kevin LeBlanc will be cooking Cajun at the Mardi Gras party. So it's well worth it if you want to go to the Mardi Gras party at Art Space. It's a fundraiser and the cooking, the food will be guaranteed to be awesome. And they have lots of, what do you call it? Raffle items.
Raffle items.
Nice.
And make sure you bring cash because I will be selling raffle tickets.
Cash is king.
That's it?
Did I already show this? I can't, I feel like I'm having deja vu that we made it into the Washington Flyer magazine. I mentioned, I picked this up when I was at the airport a couple of weeks ago. Where'd it go? I had all marks. Now I can't find it.
That was the street.
It was in there once.
Where is it?
Anyway, this is, I mentioned this where there were, here it is.
Where in California?
Virginia and Maryland getaways. I didn't have anybody cool to talk to, so I got this magazine. And it says, it has St. Michael's, Maryland, Harper's Ferry, West Virginia, and Herndon, Virginia, our weekend getaways. So.
And all three.
Anyway, I picked this up to give to Dennis because I don't think he actually had a hard copy, but he's not here, so I don't know if you guys will look at it. It's pretty cool.
That is extremely cool.
Yeah. Mr. Town Manager, you got anything for us?
I have nothing for us.
All right. Well, then that, we do have a need to go into a closed meeting this evening. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session under section 2.23711A1 for discussion of prospective candidates relative to appointments to boards and commissions. Is there a case? Breathe in a second.
Ms. Trier's seconded it.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Thank you very much. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, and those opposed. All righty, we will take a brief recess and we'll start in about five minutes.